Whoop, I banged the gavel and we're not ready yet, I'm sorry. I'd like to call this public hearing to order. Rule call please.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Rogan?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Gahn?
Here.
Mr. Wexler?
Here.
The purpose of said public hearing is to hear testimony and discuss the following. File of the Council number 125, 2017, in ordinance appropriating funds for the expenses of the city government for the period commencing on the first day of January 2018 to and including December 31, 2018 by the adoption of the general city operating budget for the year 2018.
We do have a sign-in sheet this evening for anyone who wants to comment on the budget. Before I call anyone up here, just like to remind everyone, the rules of council apply. You're allowed five minutes to speak. This is a period for you to comment on the budget, it's not a period for council members to answer questions. So if you have questions that you would like us to find out the answers to, please prepare them and get them to our office in writing later on this week. First speaker, Joan Hodewanitz.
Joan Hodewanitz, city resident and taxpayer. I only want to comment about one aspect of the budget which I hope you would consider as you review it and perhaps negotiate with the administration before it becomes law of the land, and that is stormwater costs. Now, for the 2017 budget, obviously, nothing was put in there other than contracting for the Arcadis study, which we still don't have the results, so we still don't have any kind of parameters on the costs for the city. And then, I see nothing in the budget there that addresses stormwater costs or stormwater revenue, for that matter, for 2018. Which leads me to an observation. If, in fact, Pennsylvania American Water gave up responsibility for stormwater management for the city when it sold the system, then who's been working on our stormwater infrastructure since last January? And who's going to be working on it next year? I don't see even a putative stormwater fee. I don't see any budget line or entries for that. Maybe it's all going to fall under the contingency budget line item. But I think you, especially if you should, by the grace of God, get the results of the Arcadis study before you have to pass this budget, take a look at those issues, and then take a look at the budget again. And can we go a whole year without factoring that into the budget? Personally, I don't think you should. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name's John Walsh. I'm a Scranton resident for like the last thirty years, probably fifty out of my sixty years. Raised my children here in the city, and they're doing very well today. I have a couple of issues. And one issue, first issue, is the garbage fee. Now, under the Municipality Act, you can only charge what it costs. Now, I made the Auditor General aware of, once he took over the pension funds, where this money came from. And hence, I think he did an audit of you guys, and where did that, where does that money go? You know, I think, I said it before, and I'll say it again, it was revenue shifting on the part of the mayor. And you're basically part of it, because it's kind of like a conspiracy. Oh, to answer your question, the, the, American Water is now in charge of that, and there's thirty-seven million dollars been set aside in collecting revenue for that storm surge. Once in a while, this Grand Times lets out a truth. So with the Municipality Act, that's one issue. Second issue is that the recyclables are being recycled, I don't know to date, but for the longest time, by civilian detainees from the county prison. Now, that's against federal law and international law, okay? So, and you guys are part of that, and we're part of it, okay? So, that's another big issue, because the administrative law that Judge Trish Corbett wrote is completely illegal, okay? It was, it was basically done under the same scheme that the Kids for Cash scheme went under. So now that you're aware of that, and you continue to vote to keep that tax fee involved, you guys should not. Municipality Act is quite clear, you should only cost, only, we should only pay what it costs, okay? Now you're aware of it, okay? It's in the record, okay? My last, well, I got one more. The idea of this downtown parking fee, okay? I spent the last winter in Naples. They don't have meters. They don't, they have parking garages that are open to people who come and visit and shop in downtown area. And a lot of people don't like coming here because of that. They're afraid they're gonna, first of all, they gotta pay an absorbent amount, and then they're afraid of getting overtime and then getting slammed with a twenty-dollar parking fee. So that's a, you know, you want your city to thrive, you need to take that apart. The, the point of matter is, I think I had left you guys something about Walmart boycotts.
Mr. Walsh, this is for comments on the budget?
Well, this, this has to do with the budget, sir, okay?
Please, please get to it then, to the budget.
Relax, chill.
No, we have-
The point is, okay, with the living wage, you basically collect more tax, okay? This city is one of the highest income taxes in the state, probably only second to Philadelphia, correct? Yeah. So, that's my point about a living wage, and I think this, you people should make a resolution of basically going for a living wage within this community, okay? I have bigger dreams of collective capitalism, but I take one step at a time. So I'd like to put this into the record. And that's about all I have for the moment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Marie Schumacher. The Act 47 exit plan forecasted total revenues of ninety-one point six million without the implementation of PEL recommendations. I would like to know which PEL recommendations have been implemented to increase the revenue budget amount by three-point-three million dollars. I will be submitting these in, in tomorrow. Next, where is the contingency plan for the possible loss of one or more of the lawsuits, most especially the Act 511 taxes on which Judge Gibbons has already ruled, and not in the city's favor, I might add? With the looming increase of property taxes imposed by the Scranton School District, I believe it will put more stress on many property owners. I strongly urge that there be no hires for newly created positions until each and every law, existing lawsuit against the city and the Scranton Sewer Authority is resolved. If, as has been noted by Finance Chair Evans, the assessment value of taxable property has been decreasing due to assessment appeals, and the same collection rate is presumed for the preparation of the 2018 budget, I don't understand how the 2018 budget amount increased over that of 2017. Maybe you can explain that. The refuse fees, where's the study to support this is a, this is a legitimate fee and not a tax? If the study to bid, to, yeah, excuse me, I screwed up here. If the study is to be received in the first quarter of 2018, does not the support this as a fee, will the budget and amount to be collected be adjusted? And why are we continuing to ignore the statute that requires the separate account? And, and why, why would you not consider, or why would you consider converting to a payroll tax if the city will exit Act 47 in 2021, and this tax is available only to Act 47 municipalities? I think that's probably a waste of time. Why have you paid no heed to the complaint of a few weeks ago that it appears property owners are paying pretty much double for building inspections? Also, are there signatures available to show all inspections have been, actually been What is the collection rate on the quality-of-life tickets? It appears the revenue amount for this activity does not cover the fully burdened costs of performing this function, so why do we continue doing that? What rate of interest are we getting on the unspent sewer asset sale proceeds, and where is it invested? On the plan to expand and refine banking services, will this effort be bid out? Regarding the hope for payments in lieu of taxes, why are we not performing the HUB tests on all exempt properties? I think that would have a larger payoff than, than the, than the tax increase in our tax revenue instead of the payments in lieu, relying on the payments in lieu of taxes. Would you please explain how the ordinance defining procedures for utility company interaction with the city was changed, and when it was approved by council? Is 2018 the final year of the Safer Grant? Does the city maintain a log of all street paving? Is there a procedure in place for how streets are selected for paving, and could you provide a copy? The parking lease agreement requires the city to pay two-point-eight-five million for John Basaliga's renovation of the Electric City Garage. Has all of this amount been expended, and if not, how much is in the 2018 budget for this expense? The budget states that TV, cable TV amount for 2018 is consistent with the 2017 budget, but the recent quarterly payment times four is over a million dollars, so why is the budget amount eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars? Why is the amount budgeted for the Icebox Development repayment one-thousand dollars when the agreement required six-hundred thousand dollars? I'll continue during the regular meeting, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, this hearing is adjourned. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world, and also for those who have passed away in our community. Rule call please.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Rogan?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Gahn?
Here.
Mr. Wexler?
Here. Dispense with reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A Agenda for the Board of Zoning Appeals Meeting held November 8, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not received and filed.
3B Minutes of the regular meeting of the members of the Scranton Housing Authority held October 2, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not received and filed.
3C Minutes of the Scranton Firefighters Pension Commission Meeting held October 18, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not received and filed.
3D Minutes of the Non-Uniform Municipal Pension Board Meeting held October 18, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not received and filed.
3E Minutes of the Scranton Police Pension Commission Meeting held October 18, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not received and filed.
3F Minutes of the Composite Pension Board Meeting held October 18, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not received and filed.
3G Agenda for the Non-Uniform Municipal Pension Board Meeting held November 15, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not received and filed.
3H Controllers Report for month ending October 31, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not received and filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
Yes, I have one announcement. Guys, this will be the, the final announcement, and just a reminder, for Officer Chris Hallick's fundraiser, which will be this Saturday. It's going to be at the FOP Lodge, which is 401 Rural Road Avenue. The time is six o'clock to ten o'clock. There'll be food, drinks, raffles. It's fifteen dollars a person, and tickets can be purchased at the door. And again, just as a reminder, Chris is a Scranton police officer who got diagnosed with rare formal leukemia, and him and his family are in need right now of our support. So let's please get out there on Saturday at the FOP Lodge, six o'clock to ten o'clock, and show our support for him. Thank you.
I have one, I'm sorry, go ahead. Thanks.
I have two announcements. First one, just a brief one, November 25th is Small Business Saturday, so please go visit our small businesses in the city. Secondly, Giovanni Piccolino, the owner of Buonas Pizza, will once again be having a free Thanksgiving dinner for everyone in the city of Scranton. The dinner will be at Buonas Pizza on Thanksgiving from twelve to two PM. The dinner will be served at the pizza shop. Anyone who would like a delivery, deliveries will be personally delivered by Giovanni from eight AM to ten PM. He asks people not to call the pizza shop if you need a delivery, but to call him at his cellphone. And I'll read this number off, his phone number is five-seven-zero-four-six-eight-six-seven-eight-two. I'll read that again. And I'd like to thank Giovanni Piccolino and the entire staff at Buonas for always giving to the community. The Thanksgiving dinner that he does, as well as the Christmas dinner that Mr. Bolus does, are just two great reminders of what a great community we have here in the city. So I want to thank Giovanni for doing that, and anyone who doesn't have anyone to be with on Thanksgiving, feel free to, to go to his dinner, or if you need a delivery, to give him a call. Thank you.
Okay, well, I'm going to repeat what Pat said, because what I had as well, but I'm just going to add a little to it. Small Business Saturday will be held on Saturday, November 25th. In downtown Scranton, there will be approximately thirty downtown businesses that will participate, and each will hold an open house from nine AM to six PM on that day. So remember for the holiday season to be on to shop local, and shop small, and support all of our small businesses. That's all I have.
DPW workers will be off for Thanksgiving holiday. Refuge and recycling collections will be picked up on Friday, November 24th. City Hall will be closed for the holiday on both Thursday, the 23rd, and Friday, the 24th. City Council will not meet next week due to the holiday. Will resume our weekly meetings the following week on November the 30th. The week following Thanksgiving, the week of November 27th, there will be no paper red recycling this week. DPW will be conducting leaf pickup for the entire week with all available resources. Please bag your leaves, do not sweep them to the curb. Bags are available at the DPW Building 101, Poplar Street, on the following days. Mondays from two to five, Wednesdays from two to seven, and Thursdays from two to five. If you have any questions, please call the DPW at five-seven-zero-three-four-eight-four-one-six-five. This Saturday, November 18th, the 25th Annual Santa Parade will be held in the downtown. The parade begins at nine-thirty at the corner Franklin Avenue, Spruce Street, and ends at Courthouse Square. Please be mindful of road closures as you're traveling through the downtown. The Voluntary Action Center announced the Christmas Holiday Bureau is now open for scheduling interviews. The program provides limited financial assistance to low-income families in Lackawanna County during the holiday season. Families seeking assistance can call five-seven-zero-five-zero-four-oh-two-four-four for information and to schedule an interview. You may call weekdays from nine AM to three PM through November 22nd. On Sunday, November 26th, from eleven AM to four, the Bi-Local Holiday Marketplace will be held at the Scranton Cultural Center, which showcases our local businesses, artists, and crafters. There is a two-dollar admission fee.
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Joan Hodewanitz, city resident and taxpayer. It's that time of year again, November 28th through December 3rd, at the marketplace at Steamtown, second floor, right in front of the Crunch Gym. The Friends of the Scranton Public Library will be having their quarterly book sale. Now, this book sale comes right before Christmas, and we sell hard and soft cover, soft cover books for adults and children, DVDs, CDs, audiobooks, all kinds of things. And we charge one to two dollars, and many of these books are in mint condition. I've gotten hardcover books that would have sold retail for sixty dollars for just two dollars. So I expect to see every one of your shiny little faces there, especially those of you who have munchkins, Bill. And I do hope you all have your Scranton Public Library, library cards, for your children also. Remember that all the money we make on these book sales gets reinvested into the Scranton Public Library, which serves the entire community. And, and we only charge for library cards, nothing. So, support us. Also, you are all invited, and the entire city is invited, to a birthday party, December 1st, which is first Friday, from six to eight PM, at the Lackawanna County Children's Library at 520 Vine Street, which is right next to the Albright Memorial Library and across the street from Lackawanna College. We're celebrating being in that building for thirty years, okay? The building itself is a hundred and two years old. If you've never been to the Children's Library, you're in for a treat. We're going to have all kinds of fun, and prizes, and games, and cake, and beverages, and all that good stuff that you would have at any decent birthday party. But take a look at that, that facility, and what we offer. It's not just paper books and paper magazines. It's DVDs and CDs. It's the Early Learning Station computer system, which has sixty instructional programs in both English and Spanish for our children, teaches them reading, writing, science, math, art, and music, okay? We have an indoor theater in which we give plays with puppets, and we do storytelling. We have a computer lab, which we teach both children and adults how to use a computer, all kinds of computer programs, up to things like Lego for robotics, Minecraft mania, all kinds of things, Word, Excel, anything you can think of, how to buy stuff on eBay, wonderful thing. A lot of the children come from homes that don't own a computer. Guess where they can go to learn to use a computer, and have access to a computer to do their homework? Children's Library. And by the way, it's free, okay? So maybe the Scranton School District is swirling down the drain, but you can still take your kids and get them educated at the Children's Library. So that's December 1st, six to eight, the entire city is invited, and I expect to see all your shiny little faces. Okay, speaking of shiny little faces, and anybody see hide or hair of the Knowles insurance list? I'm going to keep asking. And if I have to shame the administration to let that thing go, I will. Also, I went to the pension board meetings yesterday, and I could not stay until the end on the Consolidated Pension Board, but when I left, there were an executive session, and they were discussing, just before that, the bid that they had for the Independent Medical Examination Coordinator. If you know, let me know during fifth order, did they hire the TPA? Do we have a third-party administrator for the disability pensions? I had hoped that they would make the vote, but I just didn't stay, because I went off to the prison board meeting. And finally, I really would love to see the results of the Arcadis study on stormwater management. If I recall, when that thing got passed, they projected that it would be available in the October to November timeframe. Well, little Mickey is, you know, it's like November 16th, you're not here next week, we're coming towards the end of the year. Can somebody please, you know, shake the bushes and see if that thing comes out, because we really should see the results of that study? Yes, Bill?
I don't know if it took place, but there was a meeting scheduled, from what I understand, today in City Hall between Pennsylvania American Water, the administration, and Arcadis. And that meeting needed to take place in order for Arcadis to complete the study. One of the things I have been concerned about, and I think I've said this publicly, is the meeting has taken so long to take place. They've been, Arcadis has been asking for this meeting apparently since as late as August or July, so it goes all the way back to the summer. So for whatever reason, I don't know, but I, I was going to ask tonight for a full report on that meeting, and then, you know, one of the-
Projected completion-
Completion date, right.
Yeah. Because nobody's been working on the infrastructure this year, as, as far as I know, and I doubt anybody's going to be working it next year. Thank you.
Andy Spraglier, says his Scranton, fell Scrantonians. I want to talk a little about the reassessment that you keep pushing. The truth is, the city is being sued for oppression. It seems like we exceeded the taxable amount on our reassessed value of properties. So hence, the only way to cure that was to have a reassessment. But who does the reassessment have? We all know the first year is neutral, but not the second, third, or fourth. Who would make out in a reassessment? Lawyers and real estate people. They're the people who make out the most. The rest of us are going to lose. I don't know why you're pushing for a reassessment at this time. The truth is you're just forcing the mayor to live, to follow the state-recommended guidelines for taxes. But you don't, you've got your head in the sand, and that's not right. You cannot oppress the citizen anywhere. I told you when you all came out there, this ain't the first time I talk about oppression. I talked about this many a times. I kept pointing out, Scranton is not Ireland, and you're not the British. But you're doing the same thing to Scrantonians as the British citizen, the people in Ireland. And I don't know how you could stand to do that. You cannot oppress the people. You gotta live within the means and the taxing body. You don't, you're not a separate state. You can't exceed the laws of Pennsylvania, saying that we don't have to buy it by them. We can oppress people as much as we want because we're a self-governing city? That's not right. Taxation is something that should be taken very seriously. This is the reason we built this country, on taxation without representation. You're representing us, true, but you're violating state laws, and hope you could sit there and wait it out for three years while I go through the court system. This isn't right. This thing should be rammed right up to the Supreme Court and get a ruling, one way or the other, so we can say either you're legal or not legal. You've been oppressing the people, or you haven't been oppressing the people. But I don't know how you can sit there and stand and not force the mayor to do that, to ask for a fudgy reassessment, you had no trouble going to the courts. Real fast, they gave you a ready, reading. But oppression is more serious. is more serious. This is the backbone of the whole democracy. You cannot oppress people and think they're gonna stand idly by and take it. We are not. You got the lawsuits against you now. The only thing is, we gotta force this onto the Supreme Court and get a ruling, one way or the other. A city that sits there and tried to avoid, one way or the other, because you're gonna have to make front taxes. Your budget doesn't say anything about increasing taxes. It says, "No taxes increase." But yet, if we lose that lawsuit, something gotta be done. You can't sit idly by as citizens of the city. You really can't because you're affected by it the same as I'm affected by it. And I wish you'd get off your high horses and force the mayor to do it. Thank you.
Marge Kravitz.
Marge Kravitz, taxpayer. I wanna know, where, where is my money? Garbage tax is three hundred dollars a year. I pay eighty-nine dollars in May and eighty, eighty-nine dollars in September. Well, I went Tuesday to pay off my two thousand and sixteen tax that's paid off. So I thought, well, let me put thirty dollars on my two thousand and seventeen tax. Well, they told me I haven't paid anything on my two thousand and seventeen. I, I paid a hundred and seventy-eight dollars already. So, I'm like, oh, maybe I did make a mistake. So I went home, I checked my records, I paid it, I called the bank, double-checked it. They said they cashed the check, they cashed the two checks. So where is my money? I mean, the lady in the office went to that computer, to that, this computer. Both computers said I did not pay anything. So I am on disability. I only get so much a month, and I pay two hundred and twenty-six dollars a month for health insurance. So, could you tell me where my money is? And there's five girls working in the office, and two of them are talking about going to Lowe's to get light bulbs. So, she tells, she tells me to go to my bank and get copies on my two checks, back and front. So now I have to go to the bank tomorrow to get copies, and I'm gonna have to pay for the copies. And I have to waste my gas to come here again to prove I paid for the garbage tax. Is this right? I have to waste my time. I have to pay for the copies. I have to waste my gas. And then I have to pay three hundred dollars for a garbage tax. You know, are you going to lower the garbage tax this year? Nobody?
I don't, at this point, I don't think, um, there, there was an effort underway with the recycling initiative to see if we could move to a pay-as-you-throw program, um, so you would only pay for the amount of garbage you put out. Unfortunately, that study has not been completed yet. Uh, when Mr. Bolzoni was here last week, he said that would probably be done in the first quarter of, uh, two thousand and eighteen. Unfortunately, at that point, uh, we probably wouldn't be able to go back anyways because you'd have to implement the program. So, um, to be honest with you, at this point, it's, it's probably gonna stay at three hundred.
It's a shame because I can't afford it. I'm selling my house. I'm getting out hopefully next year. And, I don't know, I think this is terrible. This, I just wanna know where my money went to. Did it go to another bill? Because I know last year it was four million dollars that they took from the garbage tax to pay other bills with it, and they can't tell me what bills they paid with it because we're in a lawsuit. Thank you.
Lenny Cerebro.
Good evening, council. Uh, Lenny Cerebro, Scranton resident. Um, Mr. Gallin, I want to thank you for last week, uh, just for speaking out, you know, for whatever it's worth. You know, it's, it's pretty good. It's like, hope that somebody's gonna look into it, you know?
We, we actually, we got a, not to cut you off, but we got an email, the whole council did, from Kay Garby, who's the mayor's secretary, and the mayor did respond, uh, to the letter, uh, that we sent last week, uh, asking for the meeting between you, the city engineer, the DPW director, and the mayor to settle this issue. And, uh, the mayor said that he is going to be in contact with the DPW director for an update on everything as it stands at this point. So that was, uh, his response. Um, so we didn't get a clear answer on whether or not a meeting will be set up, but I will follow up, uh, with the mayor on his email to see if, once he speaks with the DPW director, and hopefully, uh, that is soon, that we can, uh, set a meeting up and, um, get you some finality to this whole issue, good or bad.
Okay, uh, yeah, even an answer, you know, instead of just a, um, passing the buck thing. But you know what? I do have to say that we have been in this position before with meetings being tried to be done, and, and that's what happens is, uh, okay, we're waiting for an answer once again, you know, like when we could have a meeting, and it, it doesn't come through. Or, you know, we had two meetings that were supposed to be, uh, come together, but I know that, uh, last year, one of them was, I even forget, maybe both of them were canceled because of bad weather. But, uh, then see, nothing happened after that. That's what I'm afraid of that. Okay, now we're waiting for an answer again, and here we go again, the same thing.
Mr. Gallagher, the DPW director, did send us the bill that, uh, he had from when they went and cleaned the drain out previously, uh, whenever that was. Um, the way I envision this is, it, just as I said before, um, obviously, they, they did try to do something, but it didn't work because you're still having the problem. So, I envision this as a meeting between all of us to say, it's, the, the problem is still not solved. Where do we go from here? And then, give us a, a solid timeline on what needs to be done.
That's what I'd like to hear, a solid time. So I'm, I'm wondering, uh, if we don't hear from the mayor or if everybody putting this meeting-
I, I will tell you this, Mr. Cerebro. If we do not hear from the mayor by the end of next week on whether or not a meeting can be set up, I will personally go with you to his office when I get out of work, and we will wait there until we get him and we'll straighten this thing out.
Great.
If that's what we need to do. I doubt it. I think the mayor will get, uh, back and set up a meeting. I'm hopeful anyways, but if not by the end of next week, I'll meet you down there and, um, we'll speak to him.
Wonderful. We'll go from there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Les Spindler.
Good evening, council. Les Spindler, city resident, homeowner, taxpayer. Well, I wasn't here last week, but I want to congratulate everybody who was victorious on Election Day, especially Mayor Courtright. Just shows that I think the majority of the people devoted in this city are confident that the city's going in the right direction, and they spoke on Election Day. Uh, next, I want to talk about the budget. I was happy to see there's no tax increase for the second year in a row, which contradicts what some people said earlier this year. The only reason the mayor didn't raise taxes this year is because it's an election year. Well, next year's not an election year, and he didn't raise taxes. So those people were only blowing smoke, being political. And there's no, not gonna be any borrowing this year. It's the first time since I can remember, maybe since the Connors administration, that the city hasn't had to borrow money. And again, I think that's a good sign, and the city's starting to turn a corner. With the mess the mayor was left his first four years, I think he's done a fairly good job. And, uh, one thing I don't like is the garbage tax not being lowered. I've been talking about this for years and years and years, saying that it's illegal. We pay property taxes to have our garbage picked up, and this is a tax. It's not a fee. A fee is something you pay and you get something in return. We don't get anything in return for paying that garbage tax. Like I said, we pay for that already. And you people said this earlier this year, that you're gonna do something to lower the garbage tax. Obviously, you didn't do it. But you're probably gonna okay raises for people in this city. I mean, everybody deserves a raise, but I don't think they should be getting raises when the people are still getting it stuck to them with that three hundred dollar tax. And I have a double, so I pay six hundred dollars. It's just wrong, and something's gotta be done. Moving on, I was disappointed in reading the paper a few days ago that last Friday was Dave Bolzoni's last day with the city. I think Dave, along with the mayor, were two major parts to moving this city forward. I worked with Dave for many years in a financial institution. He's a very smart, educated man, and the city's gonna miss him dearly. I don't know who his replacement's gonna be, but he's got big shoes to fill, and I wish Dave lots of luck in his new endeavor. Uh, next thing, the Family Dollar Main Avenue, I spoke about this quite a few times. People are still coming out the wrong way. I don't know what's gonna happen. I know they were supposed to have done something by now. Obviously, they didn't.
On, on that issue, could we, I know we did get a response from Pendon. There's, at the time, there wasn't even an occupancy, not an occupancy permit, but a road access permit issued. Um, and more action was supposed to happen. If we could follow up on that, because that is a very dangerous intersection. There's, there's actually no, well, you know, there's no light.
Yeah.
You know, when Bernardes was there, it was always painted one way on the building, and people, you know, people like us who lived in West Side our whole lives, we know, but-
Oh, yeah. I was just there today.
People from out of town or just moved in, they don't know. Um, so you can't even fault the drivers a lot of times. They, they just don't know. So, if we could send a follow-up to Pendon, and unfortunately, on this one, it is, it's a Pendon Road, so the city, there's nothing the city could do, but it's a dangerous situation that the state needs to address.
Okay, something I mentioned last time I was here, and I've mentioned for eleven or twelve years now, dangerous dog legislation. It's time your people have to do something. I'm sure you heard about the tragedy two weeks ago with PetSmart, where that tiny dog was ripped to shreds by pit bull. And, uh, I hear people say, oh, pit bulls are, they're not bad dogs. It's how they're trained, and how they're brought up. Well, I told you, my dog was attacked by two pit bulls once, and I did a lot of research on them. Pit bulls were bred to fight in pits in England, and that's why, where the name Pit Bull comes from. I'm sure you're all unaware that that's not the real name of the dog. It's called an American Staffordshire Terrier. They're dangerous dogs. Fighting is in their blood. And if I was that woman that owned that poor dog that was killed, I'd be suing PetSmart. There's total negligence on their part. There's no way that Pit Bull should have let, been able, been able to run loose the way it did. And I hope that woman sues for every penny she can get from PetSmart. But again, you people have to do something. You don't lower the garbage fee like you said you would. You don't do anything about dangerous dogs. I'm gonna borrow life from the auditor general, what he said to the school board. I'm gonna clean it up a little. It's time for you people to get your heads out of your butts and do something for this city, for the taxpayers of this city, before a young child is injured or killed by one of these dangerous dogs. Thank you for your time.
Gerard Hetman.
Good evening, council. Gerard Hetman from the Lackawanna County Commissioner's Office. To begin this evening, a public meeting on the, uh, master plan for what we call the Riverfront Park Project will take place on Tuesday, November twenty-eighth, five PM, at the Steamtown National Historic Site in the theater, um, in the historic site building. The Riverfront Park is the former UGI lot on Cliff Street, adjacent to the Steamtown National Historic Site. Um, the working title for this project for a little while, once it was announced, was the Boomerang Park, but we kind of discouraged use of that term, at least for the moment. So we call it the Riverfront Park Project.
Gerard, I actually, I actually like the Boomerang Park name better, so.
A lot of folks do, but-
So we're gonna, we're gonna keep on calling it Boomer-
We've gotta follow the director from the top, at least, at least at the moment. Uh, so we've moved away from that. But, uh, the meeting will provide a public overview of the master plan process and will allow for public input. And we've gotten several requests in our office, and I believe several people have spoken to council, including here at council meetings, about ideas they have and items that they want to see preserved, uh, from a nature standpoint in terms of conservation, and also from a historic standpoint in terms of city and local history. All of those ideas are welcomed in the process, and this meeting is a chance to address those directly to the groups involved with the park development. Uh, for any more information, contact Bill Davis, our Deputy Director of Parks and Recreation, at five seven zero nine six three six seven six four, or by email at davisw@lackawannacounty.org. Uh, next up, we have a bunch of Christmas and holiday-themed events here, so let me go through the list. Uh, the Lackawanna Heritage Valley Santa Train, better known as Christmas in a Small Town, takes place on Saturday, December second. It wraps up with a stop at Steamtown National Historic Site at three o'clock PM. Uh, great development we've seen. I think this is our fourth year of having it end at Steamtown in the National Park. A lot of folks really like it, and they come from near and far to check out Santa at the park. Uh, believe it or not, we had it next door at the parking lot, what is now the Intermodal Center location. Uh, not that many people would come out, uh, for the first few years that it was there, but once you say it's at Steamtown, that's the draw. Uh, before it stops in Steamtown, it actually starts up in Carbondale, and it runs through Archibald, Jessup, Oliphant, and Dixon City. There's a stop at each location, uh, but it wraps up with the big one at Steamtown, and we've seen several hundred folks come out there, families and, uh, children of all ages. We'll have music and refreshments, live music, and a visit from Santa at each stop. It's really neat. You see Santa chug right into the historic site yard on the locomotive. Really great afternoon. Uh, the county Christmas tree lighting will take place on Thursday, November thirtieth, six PM, at Courthouse Square on the North Washington Avenue side of the building. There will be a brief ceremony featuring live Christmas music and refreshments. Uh, also, the Scranton-made Holiday Marketplace at the Globe Store will take place on Friday with the opening. On Friday, December first, uh, five o'clock PM, we will have the public lighting of the building. If you drive by there today, you'll see a lot of the decorations are up, uh, and are going up. So we'll have the public lighting and the opening of the marketplace, uh, December first, on first Friday, at five o'clock PM. Uh, the Holiday Marketplace will then be open Friday from five PM to nine PM, Saturday, eleven AM to seven PM, and Sunday, eleven AM to four PM. That's, of course, the first, second, and third, just that weekend, for those hours. The Annual Festival of Trees Opening Reception, uh, once again, the festival of trees benefiting Toys for Tots, takes place on Friday, December eighth, five thirty PM to eight PM, at the marketplace at Steamtown. The cost is twenty dollars per person, with all proceeds benefiting Toys for Tots. The trees will be displayed during normal marketplace hours until January ninth. Also on Toys for Tots, uh, the Electric City Trolley Museum will run its Toys for Tots Trolley on Friday, November twenty-fourth. Uh, there's a free trolley ride for all children who bring a new unwrapped toy, uh, to the Trolley Museum that day. Uh, it's a normal cost of admission of ten dollars with the trolley ride, uh, for any adults that accompany them. Uh, the trolley rides leave at eleven, or excuse me, ten thirty AM, noon, one thirty PM, and three PM. And last but not least, the Trolley Museum Holiday Celebration takes place on Saturday, December sixteenth, ten AM to two PM. Uh, children will be able to ride the Santa, ride the trolley with Santa as part of the ten-dollar admission fee, also featuring food, live music, ornament-making, and other activities. Um, there's a number of other excursions without the celebration at the Trolley Museum that run with Santa on the trolley for the months of November and December. Uh, the Trolley Museum does a lot during the Christmas and holiday season with Santa Claus and other holiday-themed events. Any questions or for a full lineup, please call the Trolley Museum at five seven zero nine six three six five nine zero. And that's all we have. Are there any questions or comments from council? Great. Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Ron Elman.
Ron Elman?
Yes, council. Andy made such a fun talk. It's a shame, you people, you people hear, but you don't listen. And these people must fear facts, because they, they seem to avoid them. They don't answer questions like yours. Mr. Rogan, I'm not going to fight with you. I'm just saying that your claim last week about Mrs. Cummings using scare tactics without merit, it's, that was atrocious. I find her very compassionate for the people of this city and very concerned and goes out of her way on issues, whereas you people just seem, find us repulsive out here. You have no, no interest. You're drinking water all the time and going to the bathroom and looking at your computers. You should listen to everybody that gets up here like, like Les and. Andy, all these people have something to contribute. They're taking their time, which is, can't be replaced, it's gone forever. You want to see tactics, I'm going to give you one right now. Last week, Mr. Evans, your, your threat, I guess I could say, uh, of using our money to sue us with, to me, that was a scare tactic. It sure didn't help you on reelection time, I'll tell you. I think you committed suicide with it myself.
That's not, that's not important to me.
You remember, you know what you said last week up there?
What?
Have you seen the tape of, of your talking last week?
No, I don't watch the tapes.
You said that, I, I don't have it exactly, but you said that we have lost over 50 years not having the reassessment. You said first, tens of millions of dollars. Then you said, uh, hundreds of millions of dollars been lost because of no reassessment.
Of assessed value.
What does that mean? I'm, I'm talking about.
Well, assessed value is what your property has assessed value. Then you multiply that by the millage rate, and then you pay, that's your tax rate. So if you lost hundreds of millions of dollars, uh, then that equates to probably a substantial amount of tax dollars.
Sure it does. But where did that money come from? It came from a raise in taxes over and over and over again.
Well, if we.
That's exactly where it came from. It didn't come from anywhere else. It came from the reassessment being allowed by law, the millage to go up and up and up. I know this was just, uh, uh, you know, that it wasn't physical that we're talking about. But that's, that's it. And if you go through with this nonsense of, against a democratic vote, this is exactly what you're going to allow. The taxes going up and up and up. You've got the school board, the county, the city, that can raise the millage as much as they want over the years. And you yourself, you're talking about, let's just say, the next 50 years, you're talking about $100 million.
That's in lost assessed valuation, that's not tax dollars. In fact, we would have had more tax dollars and probably would have avoided taxes.
You're backing up now. You said last week, we lost tens of millions of dollars.
Of assessed valuation, that's correct.
Well, I know this is what we could have lost.
No, we actually lost, yeah. That's true.
I, I think you're wrong.
Well, that's, that's certainly your prerogative.
As a taxpayer, I can say, I'm ashamed of you. I think it's just a shameful disgrace to that chair, what you've done up there to the people of this city. And you talk about scare tactics? What the hell do you call threatening to sue us with our own money? This mayor just had the most vicious, dirtiest, vile campaign, and it was unnecessary. And but if Mr. Mulligan had denounced this reassessment, he would have won by a landslide. I guarantee you, he would have. There's no doubt about it. And Lenny, let me say, you could break into Fort Knox before you get to see the mayor. You'll have a better chance. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, you just need to state your name and address. State your name and address, please.
Uh, Mike Conley, 229 North Garfield Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania.
Thank you.
1-8504. Let me make this thing work correctly. Um, I think a couple of you know who I am. First off, I wanted to, um, apologize to Liza at the OECD. I've had a major problem with the house that, um, I purchased from Lackawanna Neighborhood Inc.
Mike, I'm sorry, just a step back a little bit from the mic, it's too muffled.
Because I can't hear back there, I don't know, can you guys hear me? Anyway, yeah, no problem. I am a bit loud. Um, anyway, and they helped me immensely to solve this problem. It wasn't really their problem, but they did solve it. Couple of folks up here are aware of it. And I think I accidentally kind of pissed Liza off, and I just wanted to publicly apologize to her. Uh, the other thing I wanted to say is, this is a beautiful city we have here. It's plagued with problems, we can hear it from these folks. But one, you know, there's a couple of ways. I'm not from here, I've been here for a couple of years. Um, all I see is opportunity here. When I drive around, some people don't look up enough, they don't realize, you know, I mean, I was that way where I used to live. This city needs a film commission. It costs $15,000 a day to film in New York. That's why a lot of film companies, not only film, but television production companies go to Canada, because it's cheaper. There is every aspect of every city, whether it could be South Carolina, New York City, wherever, here in Scranton, this is something that needs to be looked at. I have a way to do this that it would cost next to nothing. This is something I think really needs to be looked at. It could bring in a lot of revenue into this city. That includes hotels, it includes, you know, restaurants and all sorts of other things that go with it. The other thing is, um, it's, you, there's a problem with trying to get a hold of you gentlemen, and it's the gatekeepers. Uh, it's really hard to get through, to get a message to you guys. The mayor, like this gentleman said, is almost impossible. Um, there's another problem with contractors in this city that I think that we need to address and have an education on how not to get ripped off by contractors who ask for, um, deposits, because once it gets past that, it's a civil action. So someone who gives them their hard earned money has to end up going to court to get it, and chances are, they're only going to get paid payments on it. I had a situation that happened to me, and luckily, the police handled it. Thank goodness for the Scranton Police, and they took care of it. Um, there was one more thing that I had, and it's, it's a good thing. I just have to find it, I'm not used to this phone. Let me do this real quick. I hope you guys are having a fun time up there. Okay, just give me one more second. I really think that that, the film commission is something that really needs to be looked at. And like I said, it's not something that is expensive. The street signs in this city is a total embarrassment. I mean, if you look poor, you are poor. I am poor, you know, I live in a hood house. I have a way of getting these street signs fixed, the bent ones, a stop sign that actually is red and white, that you can see where it stops. I mean, the liability for this stuff is insane. You know, Lafayette up by our area is, it's been bent for two years. It's not even green anymore, but I, I know of a way to put a program together to fix all these things that would cost the city hardly anything. There's a way to utilize people who work in the city or people who are looking to work in the city to, to handle these kind of situations. And I would love to meet with some of you. I have another issue that's more personal that I would like to meet with you with, that has to do with the city. Um, and on that, I thank you for your time, and I thank you for your work. I know it's not easy to be up there listening to people yelling at you all day. I was married, so I know.
Mr. Conley, just before you go, I appreciate all your comments and I like your enthusiasm, but I will disagree that we're hard to get a hold of. I will disagree with that.
Well, then you try to come to my house.
No, just excuse me one second, I just, I know you've never tried to get a hold of me, but Mrs. Reed is in the office, Mr. Carrera is in the office. If you get messages to them, they will get to us.
Okay, I just want to give you an example, sir. I don't, I don't mean to argue with you, but these both, of these folks, some time ago, I tried to get a hold of Mr. Rogan, uh, for quite a long time. And every time I called in to get a hold of him, I had to go through the gatekeepers and explain the situation, and then it was, well, let me get back to you. No one would get back, on and on and on. I had talked to you about this, Paul, this was over a year ago. Um, I haven't tried to get a hold of since, because after trying to get a hold of the mayor, like this gentleman was saying back there, it was almost, I still had, never did be able to get a hold of him. So I don't mean any disrespect to anyone, but, uh, it isn't that easy.
Yeah, well.
But it wasn't for me.
But I mean, for Mrs., Mrs. Reed is in the office, Mr. Carrera is in the office, and.
Well, I hope that you got more out of what I said than.
I appreciate all your great ideas, and I'm anxious, I'm anxious to hear about them, to be honest.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Before I pick up on my budget questions where I left off, um, uh, Mr. Wexler, what about our parking meeting?
I still haven't heard yet.
There are how many weeks left in this year? Um, didn't somebody say last week it has to be held this year?
That's, that was, that's my understanding. That's my understanding.
And do they have to give legal notice?
Um, I don't think so, it's a private company. Unless it, unless the Parking Authority has a meeting, as, if it's part of a Parking Authority meeting, then it has to be public. But this, uh, NDC is a privately held company.
Yeah, well, I mean, some of the things I, that are happening with parking are, I would really like to hear from the horse's mouth what's going on.
I, I agree, we've been, we've been working with them to try to get answers as well.
Um, okay, picking up where I left off, I believe. Okay, yeah, what asset is to be sold in 2018 for $1,000? And what asset was sold in 2017 for $2.5 million? Then the budget. Uh, where is the justification for increasing the amount of revenue for market-based revenue by $49,000 when we have yet to receive any revenue from this line item?
I have the same, I have the same similar questions as you, and I'm, was posing them in the caucus, so I don't have an answer to that.
Okay, will, will the estimated $640,000 of liquid fuels funds fully repay the Pennsylvania Infrastructure Bank paving loan? And if not, what, what will be the balance? How about the payment of $785,000 of liquid fuels funds? Will that fully pay off the streetlight lease? Uh, specifically, what roadways will be resurfaced with the $875,000 in the newly designated program?
I don't think that list has been developed yet, but, uh, we'll work on those questions for you.
Uh, does anybody up there have the procedure? Do we have a, an official, formal procedure for which street sign, which streets are to be done? And, and as I asked earlier in the other caucus, or the, uh, the public hearing, does anybody even keep a log? Because I know one of them that was done last time was done within the prior five years.
Right. I can answer that, um, because I did, you asked this question a long time ago, and I did pose it to the administration. I don't believe that, from what, based on what they said, that there is a formal process that they go through. From what they explained to me, um, the mayor, the DPW director, um, I can't remember who else is involved, but, you know, they apparently ride around the city, look at the streets that are, you know, that they feel are in bad shape, and then they compile their own list.
I have my own ideas on how it happens, but, uh, they differ quite a bit from yours.
That's what I was told.
Just to add to that, we had people come here to council, and that's how.
I mean. I'm not going to go there tonight, maybe another night, though. Um, okay. Uh, how much of the public safety capital expense budget of $350,000 is for the Sorenti facility? Uh, what is the narrative that explains the BA's bank fees of 87, $87,250 in 2017, going down to $11,000 in 2018? But the 27 actuals through September are $210,046. I mean, to me, that makes no sense. Does anybody know? Have you looked, have you reviewed the budget?
If I can just make one comment, Mrs. Schumacher, I have some of the same questions as you. We just got the budget last Wednesday, which, I mean, I have my own issues with that, based on Mr. Bolzoni then coming the next day, so it was difficult to prepare questions and have a meaningful discussion with him. But some of the questions that you're asking, I, here's my list here. I have some of the same ones. So I, I can't answer those, because I don't know them. And it wasn't really detailed in the narrative, that's why I'm asking.
I mean, I, I certainly get that feeling of a rubber stamp, uh, because you are already, ready to impose the fees on a budget which has yet been passed. And, um, I don't know, something's the cart before the horse. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. Perry?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Wexler. I have a couple, a couple of brief things, uh, follow-up from last meeting on the, uh, the fire account question that was brought up, uh, from Mr. Suribro, and I believe it was, uh, Mrs. Honwannitz. Uh, we got, thank you to, uh, Deputy Chief, Mr. Lucas. He got back to us, that account raised $43,705 in 2016. Up until 2017 through October, uh, we have raised, uh, $31,827. Uh, Mrs. Reed, if we can do a follow-up question, uh, to, uh, Mr. Lucas, uh, does this account have special allocations on how we could use that money? Like, is it for equipment? Or does that go right into, uh, the Fire Department's general fund? That would be the only follow-up I, I have with that. Uh, secondly, if staying with public safety, I just want to, uh, send out a huge thank you uh, to the Scranton Police Department, specifically their drug unit. They had one of the biggest, if not the biggest, drug bust in the city's history on Monday night. It was an ongoing 36-hour investigation, uh, with two different teams around the clock working on this. And there was a ton of nasty stuff that they recovered. I'm sure you've seen some of it in the paper. And let me just tell you, uh, you know, a lot of those people working on that, it was, it was non-stop. And they, that's to their credit. And, you know, as soon as I tried to give them a phone call for congratulations, they said, you know, they, they weren't looking for it. Uh, they already have two other things that they're working on right now. Uh, so, you know, we're, we're very, we're very fortunate to have, uh, a strong department out there, uh, keeping us as clean as we are. Now, do we have our crime? We do. But I tell you, these guys aren't quitting. They're out there making, they are making busts, and they are taking the bad guys off the street one at a time. Uh, there might be another one right behind them, but they're ready. And, uh, you know, I, I can't say enough for, for them going out every day, not knowing if they're going to come home and see their families again. So again, uh, they're, they're better people than I am, I just want to say thank you. Uh, as far as the budget, uh, as we all kind of talked about, uh, we are still delving into it. The biggest questions I have with it, uh, that I'm going to be researching this week are basically what comes around every time when you, when we're basing 2018 numbers on 2017 numbers that are incomplete, we just want to make sure what we're doing. So the fourth quarter actuals that are coming in as we speak right now, how are they comparing with our fourth quarter estimates? now, how are they comparing with our fourth quarter estimates? Because if we take a look at the budget, you know, the 2017, it just, it's incomplete, and there looks like there's a lot of gaps in it. But we might have money that's filtering in. It, we might be okay. But before we go ahead and, and take a final vote on this budget, I just want to make sure that 2017's estimates are actually in line with your actuals, because that's what we're basing 2018 numbers off of. So, there's a couple, and again, we've talked about many of them here tonight and before, at the budget meeting earlier today. I'll touch a little bit. I wasn't going to, but reassessment was brought up. Reassess, reassessment isn't something that the city of Scranton invented, or, or, you know, just came out of thin air with. Reassessment is, it's the job of the county to take care of reassessment. It's, it's not, it's not an option. I'm not sure when it came to light that reassessment could or can't be done. Reassess, reassessment has to be done. If it's not done today or this year, well, when is it going to be done? Are we going to be talking about, it's been 75 years since we've been reassessed? Reassessment needs to happen. Is it expensive? Is it necessary? Absolutely. I've been, one that I've been talking about reassessment for a while. Mr. Evans has been the spearhead of this council on it. It's, it's not an option. It, it needs to happen, and it's, it's for all of us. It's to keep equity in taxable property. That's what it's for. I think Mr. Spillane is gone right now. We touched about the Dangerous Dogs last couple of weeks. If you put a bill in front of me that puts stricter and more stringent penalties on dog owners, I'll sign it. If you want me to get behind on leash laws, I'm behind it. What I won't get behind is segregating out certain types of animals as dangerous or not dangerous. Any animal not taken care of the right way could be dangerous. So, I'm not for that slippery slope of singling one animal out over the other. I believe it's a responsibility of the owner, and I'm all for strict ownership laws. I will, I, I don't think they can be strict enough. But what I won't do is, is just go in favor of segregating out different types of animals, because I don't believe that's, I don't believe that's where it's at. And with that, that's all I have for today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I'm, just one very brief item. I know we've talked a little bit about the last few weeks, about the school district and the possibility of Shared Services Committee, the city and the school district working closer together. I do, I did speak with the mayor this week. I do know that the mayor and the school board president discussed this already. So, there, there are discussions already between the city and the school district regarding working, more cooperation, working together to try to most efficiently use our resources. So, I am glad that the mayor and the school board president did meet to, to discuss shared services, and I think that's a good first step. Looking forward to continuing those discussions, and hopefully we could have a, a formal committee formed in the near future. That is all for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rogan. Mr. Evans?
Thank you. I didn't plan on speaking about reassessments, so all I'm going to say about, on that subject, is that I stand by everything I said last week, and the week before, and the week before, and the week before, and the month before, and the year before, and the year before that. It, it's amazing how a false narrative can carry through that some people have been spewing, but we know better than that. So, I'm only going to talk about one subject tonight. I'd like to take a moment in honor of Bob McGough. Once again, by saying a few words, this Sunday, November 19th, is the second anniversary of Bob's passing, and the following are his words from a city council meeting on a subject that sadly too many of us have come to know. Bob sent in motions. Just one thing I would like to mention. I would just like to say that I know all of us have been affected in some way by this insidious disease. And I would just encourage anyone that knows someone who is fighting this, or dealing with treatments of oval cancer, to be a friend. One of the things that happens to cancer patients and those under treatment, depression is a very significant aspect of it. And believe it or not, simply sitting down and talking with people, watching a television show, bringing dinner, and having something to eat with them, goes a long way to helping people deal with that. And I would just encourage that, if you know someone, please be a friend and be part of the helping process. These personal words of wisdom and sincerity are from someone who understood the importance of even the smallest of gestures. Someone we always will respect, and they are worth mentioning once again in his memory. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Mr. Gahin?
Yes, thank you. Just to kind of piggyback on what Mr. Evans just said, this is a, kind of a somber day for this body, because we were all colleagues of Mr. McGough, and close with him, and it was just amazing to me to see the struggle that he went through, but how he faced it, how courageously he faced it. And it's amazing to me how many people, I don't know one person that isn't somehow affected by cancer. But I never saw it up close. I never saw somebody struggle with it up close like Mr. McGough did. And he just did it with such bravery, such class, and such courage. So, like I said, today's a somber day, but it's also a day that we, us up here, and hopefully all of you at home that knew Mr. McGough and followed these meetings, remember him for the man that he was. I would like to update everybody on the situation with the Green Ridge senior apartments that I've been talking about for the past few weeks. I had a chance to meet with the Executive Director of the Area Agency on Aging, Mr. Jason Kavulich, and Bill Browning, who is the Human Services Director of Lackawanna County. So, I met with them this week at the administration, County Administration Building, regarding the complaints that I have received and that this council has received about the apartments. So, we had a, a very fruitful discussion, and they suggested that a meeting be set up between the agency and the residents of this apartment complex to discuss their concerns and to review their rights as senior citizens. So, I am in the process of trying to coordinate this meeting. Mr. Kavulich said that they would bring along two of their attorneys who specialize in elder law, and they're interested to listen to their concerns and try to come to some kind of solution. They did explain to me, because they did their own research, as we have been doing over the last few weeks, that unfortunately, within the LERTA application and the legislation, there was no rent control provisions in that. In other words, it didn't say that, even though they billed it as senior affordable housing, there was nothing in there that said you couldn't go above a certain rate. So, that was unfortunate. But I'm hopeful that this meeting will provide some kind of answers to these senior citizens who are obviously having a lot of difficulty. I did send a letter, September 25th, we sent another one November 1st, to Mr. Shrive, Executive Director of the Scranton Sewer Authority. You know, I'm hoping to get a response. I asked, were RFPs issued for all of the mandated work performed by the Scranton Sewer Authority between December 2015 and December 2016? And I also asked for a list of the companies that performed the mandated work assigned by the authority. I also sent a letter, September 25th, and again, November 1st, to our city solicitor, Attorney Escra. I'm interested in finding out if one of the attachments to previous legislation that we had passed, specifically Attachment E, regarding the cleaning contract that was recently passed by this council, disclosures by current contractors. It was the first time that I had ever seen this attached to any legislation, so I was asking if that was a new document. Maybe I missed something. And if it is new, will it be used in the future for all vendors and contractors that would be submitted to city council for approval? So, I'm hopeful that they are getting these, this correspondence, and they will respond with an answer. I also wanted an update from the Business Administrator's Office on their effort to work with open.gov. This was discussed previously over the last few months with this council. Open.gov, and I'm a big believer in this, because I think it'll be very helpful. They easily share financial and performance data to communicate statuses, improve alignment, and proactively identify budget areas for attention. They transform raw data into intuitive charts, graphs, maps, and more to drive accountability and improve understanding among the, among the public and staff alike. Open.gov is used in other communities. It empowers citizens and businesses with open data to improve the community, find new business opportunities, and, more importantly, to increase citizen participation. So, what this website would do, would allow the citizens to have a greater understanding of our budget in real time, as data is implemented and inputted. So, I'd like an update on that, because I know that was something that they were working on. As I mentioned to Mrs., or Ms. Honewanitz, rather, I'm pretty sure a meeting was held today between Pennsylvania American Water, the city, and Arcadis regarding the stormwater study. So, I would like an update on their assessment, and then to find out, you know, a timeline on when this report is going to be complete. One of the other things that I want to briefly mention, and I've talked about this before, and I intend to bring it up to the mayor to see if there's something we can maybe start in 2018. When you're looking at what other cities do in regards to blight, I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel. The approach that Scranton has taken over the last, you know, couple of years is to condemn a house, to knock it down, to send an inspector out to give a quality-of-life ticket. Other cities take a completely different approach, although they still do those things. They, they come up with, or Boston, rather, came up with something called the Boston Shines Program. And I think that the city of Scranton should try to model it after the city of Boston. Boston has a bigger population. They're different, obviously, in many ways than the city of Scranton. But one of the things that they have done is neighborhood cleanup efforts that are coordinated by the city, which I have been a proponent of since I started on council. So, they're looking at revitalizing neighborhoods one block at a time. And the interesting thing that they do is something called a Love Your Block Mini Grant Program. They work with the neighborhood groups, they work with the neighbors to plan park and block cleanup. So, there's an organized effort, which I think has been missing in the city of Scranton over the last number of years. There's also something on this, on the city's website, where you can actually submit a request to host a cleanup in your neighborhood park or on your block. And then the city helps determine the best project. There's an online form that you have to fill out. So, there's a number of different things here. I won't go through all of them, but I am going to try to meet with the mayor on this, to see if it's something that we can investigate and try to accomplish in 2018. Also, just an update on Smart City Media. There is an attempt to set up a meeting at some point in December to get this project going. It was kind of a rider on the streetlighting project. The meeting is going to be held to review the system features, details, program objectives associated with the kiosk project. And one of the great things about this is that we are going to get revenue from this program. And that may fund the program, as I just previously mentioned. So, we'll be excited to get started on that. Just an update on the streetlighting project. All power issues have been taken care of as of November 13th. The fixture on Railroad Avenue has been replaced, and they are working towards a complete closeout of the project. So, it is still going on. They're in the very final phases of it. The 500 block of Lackawanna Avenue retrofit is being scheduled along with the Davis Street area. And according to the report, any outstanding deficiencies are being taken care of. And that's all I have for this week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gahin. In regards to some issues that were brought up today, the presentation was made of the, IME was made to the pension board. No vote was taken on that. They are doing some more review on that. Hopefully, something will get done with that by, by the end of the year. But no vote was, no vote was taken this week. Questions regarding the budget. I mean, we, we received our budget. We all have questions. There's questions coming from the public. The city council right now, we don't have the answers to those questions because we just received the budget. So, any questions that are submitted to us, we are going to forward those to the administration, because they will, they will have the answers. We don't have the answers for that. One concern that I have, there's some, can talk about some realignment within DPW. Part of the questions I have is how many people are going to be assigned to stormwater management? Because independent of the Arcadis study, the city still, and always was responsible for stormwater management, always was. They were assisted by, at that time, by the Sewer Authority. So, the city's always been responsible for stormwater management. But the city's not responsible for the entire stormwater management. Pennsylvania American Water is still responsible for the combined sewer system. So, as you drive through the city and you see these green lines identifying SSA, that's Pennsylvania American Water Company putting that out there. So, the city is responsible for just stormwater only, and we've always been responsible for that. So, I am anxious to see what personnel are going to be assigned for that duty from DPW. And they've, they've been doing it right now, but I'd like to see more of a prescribed plan for that. Last couple of weeks, we've been giving the county a hard time, but I'd like to give the county a compliment this week, Mr. Hetman. I saw yesterday, I think it was yesterday in the paper, that they're planning on paving North, North-South Road. Councilman Rogan had brought that up a few weeks ago, about businesses having a huge investment in the industrial park over there, and the county is stepping up to do the paving over there on North-South Road. And we appreciate that tremendously. This week, I attended two, two community meetings. Mr. Evans attended the one with me. NRN is a, we had a meeting concerning the, the program for developing some improvements into downtown Scranton. It was a meeting of community leaders and members of Scranton tomorrow. Very positive meeting. A lot of, a lot of community leaders there wishing their support for downtown Scranton. Hopefully, this will bear some fruit for us as, as we move on down the road. Today, I attended a luncheon with the representatives from Geisinger Health System. Geisinger, I'm not sure if you saw it in the paper, Scranton is going to be part of a, of a, of a study. They're going to, they're determined to make Scranton the healthiest city in America. I, I appreciate their courage on doing that. They're making a huge investment within the city of Scranton, collecting data, and using that data helped to improve the, the health of the residents of Scranton, and I appreciate them for their help. Just, just one comment. Did you notice this week, members of the, of council and council staff are wearing our purple ribbons in honor of Pancreatic Cancer Month? This area has become a hotbed for people suffering from pancreatic cancer. We talked about the suffering that Mr. McGough had, not, not from that, but from cancer in general. And we do want to show our support for people who are going through it, families that are dealing with it, and people that are trying to research a cure for pancreatic cancer. And, and I appreciate everything that they do. And that's it.
5B for introduction and ordinance amending file of the council number 6, 1976, entitled, "Inordinance as Amended: Imposing a Tax for General Revenue Purposes on the Transfer of Real Property Situate Within the City of Scranton, Prescribing and Regulating the Method of Evidencing the Payment of Such Tax, Conferring Powers and Imposing Duties Upon Certain Persons, and Providing Penalties by Imposing the Rate of the Realty Transfer Tax at Two and Two-Tenths Percent for Calendar Year 2018, and the Same Shall Remain in Full Force and Effect Annually Thereafter."
At this time, I entertain a motion, item 5B, be introduced to its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question, halls in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. So moved.
5C for introduction and ordinance amending file of the council number 7, 1976, entitled, "Inordinance as Amended," excuse me, imposing a mercantile license tax of two mils for the year 1976 and annually thereafter upon persons engaging in certain occupations and businesses therein, providing for its levy and collection and for the issuance of mercantile licenses, conferring and imposing powers and duties upon the tax collector of the city of Scranton, and imposing penalties by imposing the mercantile license tax at one mil for calendar year 2018, and the same shall remain in full force and effect annually thereafter.
At this time, I entertain a motion, item 5C, be introduced to its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question, halls in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. So moved.
5D for introduction and ordinance amending file of the council number 8, 1976, entitled, "Inordinance as Amended: Providing for the General Revenue by Imposing a Tax at the Rate of Two Milz Upon the Privilege of Operating or Conducting Business in the City of Scranton as Measured by the Gross Receipts Therefrom, Requiring Registration and Payment of the Tax as Condition to the Conducting of Such Business, Providing for the Levy..." Tax as Condition to the Conducting of Such Business, Providing for the Levy and Collection of Such Tax, Prescribing Such Requirements for Returns and Records, Conferring Powers and Duties Upon the Tax Collector, and Imposing Penalties by Imposing the Business Privilege Tax at the Rate of 1 Mil for Calendar Year 2018, and the Same Shall Remain in Full Force and Effect Annually Thereafter."
At this time, I entertain a motion, item 5D, be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question, all's in favor of introduction, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
5E for introduction and ordinance amending file of the council number 11, 1976, entitled, "Inordinance as Amended: Enacting Imposing a Tax for General Revenue Purposes in the Amount of 2% on Earned Income and Net Profits on Persons, Individuals, Associations, and Businesses Who Are Residents of the City of Scranton or Non-Residents of the City of Scranton for Work Done, Services Performed, or Business Conducted Within the City of Scranton, Requiring the Filing of Returns by Taxpayers Subject to the Tax, Requiring Employers to Collect the Tax at Source, Providing for the Administration, Collection and Enforcement of the Said Tax, and Imposing Penalties for the Violations by Reenacting the Imposition of the Wage Tax at 2.4% on Earned Income for Residents and 1% on Earned Income for Non-Residents of the City of Scranton for Work Done, Services Performed, or Business Conducted Within the City of Scranton for the Year 2018, and the Same Shall Remain in Full Force and Effect Annually Thereafter."
At this time, I entertain a motion, item 5E, be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question, all's in favor of introduction, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
5F for introduction and ordinance amending file of the council number 78, 2017, and ordinance amending file of the council number 100, 1976, entitled, "Inordinance as Amended: Levy and General and Special Taxes for the Fiscal Year 1977 by Setting the Millage for the Year 2018, and the Same Shall Remain in Full Force and Effect Annually Thereafter by Amending Section 1, Reverting Back to the Millage Rates from 2016, which are .232521 mils levy on land and .050564 levy on all buildings, and by eliminating the dedicated millage for debt service contained in Section 2, and replacing the dedicated millage for debt service with a dedicated debt percentage of 32% of real estate tax revenues collected on a current-year basis."
At this time, I entertain a motion, item 5F, be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question, all's in favor of introduction, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
5G for introduction and ordinance creating and establishing special city account number as noted, entitled, "Street Paving for the Receipt and Distribution of Funds from the Defeasance of the 2012 Series A and B Bonds with Sewer Sale Proceeds and Distribution of the Funds for Paving Streets Throughout the City of Scranton."
At this time, I entertain a motion, item 5G, be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question, all's in favor of introduction, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
5H for introduction, a resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a maintenance agreement by and between the Martz Group and the city of Scranton pertaining to the maintenance of six signs to be installed along Lackawanna Avenue for the intermodal transit center parking.
At this time, I entertain a motion, item 5H, be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question, all's in favor of introduction, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
5I for introduction, a resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract for professional services with Thomas J. McLean and Associates Incorporated for the professional design and engineering services to prepare documents for construction of a basketball court, labyrinth, and related recreation site improvements at Crowley Park.
At this time, I entertain a motion, item 5I, be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question, all's in favor of introduction, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
6th order, 6A, reading by title file of the council number 124, 2017, "Inordinance Authorizing the Issuance of Tax and Revenue Anticipation Notes Series of 2018 in the Aggregate Principal Amount Not to Exceed $12,750,000, Providing for the Date, Interest Rate, Maturity Date, Redemption Provisions, Payment and Place of Payment in Respect of the Notes, Excepting the Proposal attached heretofore as Exhibit B from the Financial Institution Named Therein for the Purchase of the Notes, Naming a Sinking Fund Depository Paying Agent, Authorizing the Proper Officers of the City to Execute and Deliver the Notes, and Certain Other Documents and Certificates in Connection Therewith, Authorizing and Directing the Preparation, Certification, and Filing of the Necessary Documents with the Department of Community and Economic Development of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, Setting forth a Form of the Notes."
You've heard reading by title of item 6A. What is your pleasure?
I moved an item 6A, pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
6B, reading by title file of the council number 125, 2017, "Inordinance Appropriating Funds for the Expenses of the City Government for the Period Commencing on the First Day of January 2018 to and Including December 31, 2018 by the Adoption of the General City Operating Budget for the Year 2018."
You've heard reading by title of item 6B. What is your pleasure?
I moved an item 6B, pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question. Based on my initial review of the budget, I do have several questions, some of which I discussed with my colleagues back in the caucus tonight. The first question that I have for the administration is taking a look at the recommendations in the three-year exit plan. I'd like to ask, which of these recommendations are underway already? Just to give us a list of those, which of those recommendations are expected to be completed in 2018? Just to give us a general update and a timeline, a comprehensive update on the status of those recommendations. One of my initial concerns is that the expenditures proposed by the city in 2018 are $91,692,110. The exit plan projections are $88,194,000, for a difference of about 4%, so $3 million. So according to Pell's letter, we're almost 118% over capital expenditures. So my one question, I did pose this in the caucus, and I'd like clarification on this. For all of the increases in capital expenditures, where are we reimbursing that, the budget, through the proceeds from the sale to sewer authority? And how is that going to work? Or are we just taking it out of the budget? So where are we using the sewer authority proceeds where we're increasing all of these capital expenditures? Under departmental earnings narrative, it says that there will be a redefinition of the enacting ordinance defining procedures for utility companies, interactions with the city, which should create a more effective program. I'd like to ask for a timeline on this. What does this redefinition include? Because we did revamp the old ordinance, and we've had numerous discussions on the pave cut ordinance. So I just want to know what this redefinition would include, and why isn't the program effective now? We were told by the administration months ago that it was going pretty well. I also brought this up in the caucus, the real estate transfer tax. We are lowering this again by 2 tenths of a percent. And I just have an initial concern about whether or not we're going to be able to hit our revenue projection, which is around $3 million, similar to what it was in 2017. Mr. Evans said he was going to provide more data to back up that claim, so I would appreciate that for November 30th. I'd also like an update on the civilian parking enforcement program from Chief Graziano. $197,500 was budgeted in 2017. We are not, I don't think we're going to hit that budget projection. And in 2018, we're only budgeting $100,000. I did notice in the budget that there are going to be two SIT clerks in those positions. So I'd just like an historical update on this program, because two years ago, it was promoted that it was going to be really successful in bringing in a lot of money. So I would like to know, or receive an update on that program. Also like an update on the Quality of Life program from Licensing and Inspections Department. We've kind of gotten that in dribs and drabs. 2017, we're budgeting $42,500. 2018, we're only budgeting $35,000 to collect in quality of life tickets, but we're adding a housing inspector. So I'd like to get the rationale behind that. Keeping with the pave cut ordinance under departmental earnings, this is one thing that I didn't understand. Under the line item for pave cuts for the gas company, we budgeted $251,910 in 2017. As far as August 30th, we've collected nothing. And in 2018, we're budgeting $195,000. So I'd like to know why we haven't collected anything yet as of August 30th this year. And I'd like to know how the $195,000 figure was arrived at for 2018. The mayor's proposing to make the Parks and Recreation Specialist position a full-time position at $49,000, up from $32,000. I would like to know if there's going to be additional responsibilities for the $17,000 increase. And I'd like to see a copy of a job description for that position and all of the other positions that have been added to the budget. Under the Business Administrator's Office, I'd like to know if we have an estimate on how the hiring of a health insurance administrator will affect the projected 5% to 10% increase in clerical and non-union health insurance. In the Human Resources budget, and I did mention this last week when Mr. Bolzoni was here, and he did refer me to the Law Department, so I would like an explanation from the Law Department, if they could provide one, on the increase of 23.6% in costs related to the city's property and casualty insurance and settlements associated with law office activity. So I'd like to get more detail on that and what exactly that activity was. Under Licensing and Inspections, it says that the department will provide a more user-friendly method of permit issuance and payment. I'd like to know, get a timeline on that, if that's possible, for 2018. Under the Police Department, the overtime is over budget by $133,360 as of September 30th. I'd like to know how much of that overtime cost is reimbursable. Capital expenditure increase of $160,000, the reasoning being sidewalk replacement at police headquarters for safety reasons, and apparently, the city's insurance risk manager is requiring this. I'd like a little bit more background on this, because I was under the impression that a few years ago, the, one of the unions stepped up and replaced the sidewalks out in front of the headquarters, if I'm not mistaken, at little to no cost. I think they provided the labor. So I'd like more of an explanation on this, on why those, what happened to those sidewalks. Also, under the Police Department, the other salary is budgeted at $401,000 for 2018. This is a large increase from the 2017 budget figure of $267,000. So I'd like a clarification on what the other salary constitutes and why the large increase. The Fire Department budget, there's an increase in overtime from $250,000 in 2017 to $275,000. Not a large increase, but I'd like to know the reasoning behind that figure. Also, the narrative says that the budget funds the remaining costs of firehouse improvement, the firehouse improvement project above the $1.5 million that was given last year, and also replaces concrete pads and sidewalks at each of the firehouses. I'd like to know what the remaining costs include, and are the sidewalk replacements and concrete pads necessary? So a little bit more clarification on that. Also, under the Fire Department, other salary, 2017, that's budgeted at $285,800. As of September 30th, we've spent $423,000, roughly $423,000 for an over-budgeted figure of $137,299. So I'd like to know why that is. And under other salary in 2018, we're budgeting that at $450,000. So again, I'd like to know the reasoning for that. $300,000 under DPW for the Novembreno Pool Complex, so that's coming out of the budget. I mentioned this in the beginning of my questioning. I'd like to know if we're going to be taking some of the proceeds from the sewer authority money and using that towards the $300,000. Under Boards, Commissions, and Nonprofits, we're going to install sidewalks at Mount Pleasant Development Site for $50,000 and a $10,000 annual contribution to the Scranton Plan. Again, I'd like a little more background on this, and is the donation for the sidewalks necessary? And why couldn't other funding have been provided? The Scranton Tomorrow budget, we're giving a $75,000 contribution, so that Scranton Tomorrow could be the Downtown Economic Development Coordinator. And I've said this before, I don't necessarily disagree with this, but I'd like to know why, what we're now paying OECD for, in some respects anyways. Is the OECD director taking on less responsibility? Because in the budget, that position is due for a raise. So I'd like an answer to that. Under the Human Resources budget, stationary and office supplies, we see an increase from $500 in 2017 to $25,000 in 2018. There is a reason for this cost. It's for equipment acquisition associated with the Department Safety and Environmental Review, which is authorized by the City Safety Committee, which I think is a good thing. But I would like clarification on, or if they know this yet, what kind of equipment we're purchasing for that amount. In the Licensing and Inspections Department, again, there's an increase in the demolition program from $35,000 to $65,000 because of greater activity. Through September 30th, and this number could have increased, obviously, but we've only spent $12,540 on the demolition program. So I'd like an update on the progress of the demolition program, using money from the budget and not OECD, and the rationale of this whole program and that increase, and is there a targeted approach to this program? Also, one of the interesting things that I noticed in the budget was the professional services is going from $7,500 to $50,000, mainly because they're going to do an energy efficiency evaluation of the DPW facility. I'd like an update on this, more information and exactly what it entails, and if they know yet, what kind of savings we might see from that program. I see Mrs. Jeffries in the back there. There's an increase in sign and paint material from $12,500 to $50,000. So obviously, there's going to be more of a focus on replacing the street signs throughout the city. At least that's the, what I'm assuming from looking at that. So my question there is, is there a new sign program? What is the methodology behind this increase? How is the department approaching the replacement of signs throughout the city? Are they keeping an inventory? Are they doing it by neighborhood? Is there documentation of all of this? So I'd like an update on that, because I'm interested in it myself, and I think it's a hot topic throughout the city. Under the Highways Department, there was an increase in Parks and Recreation Supplies from $0 in 2017 to $62,000 in 2018. So I'd like to know the reason for that. Garage increase in capital expenditures to $25,000. I'd like more details and an explanation on that. For contingency, we are increasing, from 2017, we had $585,000. Now we're going to have $705,799.10 for 2018. So I'd like an explanation behind that increase. And the Court Award increase from 2017 was $200,000, and we're budgeting $350,000 in 2018. So I'd like an explanation behind that as well. There's some other questions I have in here that, or clarifications, I should say, rather. But I will be submitting this to the administration. And just to end my comments, what I would hope for in the future, and Mr. Evans had mentioned this to me earlier, and I think it would be beneficial. You have to remember, you know, Mrs. Schumacher was asking us direct questions. We only received the budget last Wednesday. I'm assuming the election played a role in that. Then Mr. Bolzoni came Thursday, which we appreciated, but at least from my perspective, I didn't have enough time to come up with all of these questions and, you know, my need for further clarification on this budget. So in the future, and Mr. Evans had proposed this as well, I would like to see a work session where we sit around that table for two or three hours, however long, so we can go through all of this stuff in detail, because we have to vote on it. So I think moving forward- So I think moving forward, that would be a little bit more of planning and questioning, so we have the business administrator in front of us and any other department heads, I think would be very helpful. And that's all I have. Thank you.
All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
6C, reading by title filed with council number 126, 2017, and ordinance authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a trail maintenance agreement between the city of Scranton and Lackawanna Heritage Valley Authority for the maintenance and upkeep of the Lackawanna River Heritage Trail.
You've heard reading by title of item 6B. What is your pleasure?
I moved that item 6...
C.
C, pass reading by title.
6C. It was a long time ago.
No going back. Second.
On the question, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
6D, reading by title filed with council number 127, 2017, and ordinance authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute the deed conveying title from the city of Scranton Parking Authority to the city of Scranton, the property located at 100 Rear, South Washington Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, to the city of Scranton as more fully described in exhibit A attached heretofu and made a part herof.
You've heard reading by title of item 6D. What is your pleasure?
I moved that item 6D, pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the committee on rules for adoption, filed with council number 121, 2017, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a lease agreement with G.A.R. Memorial Association to extend their current lease, which is set to expire on November 28, 2017, for an additional year for a portion of the basement of City Hall to be used as exhibited meeting space.
As chairperson for the committee on rules, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question. I was disappointed last week. I made a motion to extend this lease for five years, as I've said previously, and I won't expand on this, because I think I made my point. I do think that it's beneficial to have the Civil War Museum stay in City Hall, and we find other areas for storage, and we do even more to promote the museum. So I was disappointed with that, but I am glad that they're staying for at least another year, and I'm hoping that during that year, we can find other places for storage and work to keep the museum in the basement of City Hall. Thank you.
Yeah. On the question, I'll give my reasons for voting for this. I'm going to support the legislation for a one-year lease, but I will continue to advocate for a long-term lease for the museum to stay in City Hall. I just feel it's a better chance of achieving that result if we spend the next year working together with the administration and the operators of the museum to get that result, so I'll be voting yes.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the committee on finance for adoption, filed with council number 122, 2017, amending file of the council number 65, 2016, and ordinance entitled, "General City Operating Budget 2017 by Transferring $14,499 from account number as noted, non-departmental expenditures contingency, to account number as noted, Office of the City Clerk, City Council, Professional Services, to provide sufficient funding for the payment of financial obligations through the 2017 budget period."
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the committee on finance?
As chairperson for the committee on finance, I recommend final passage of item 7B. Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C for consideration by the committee on finance for adoption, filed with the council number 123, 2017, amending file of the council number 65, 2016, and ordinance entitled, "General City Operating Budget 2017 by Transferring $200,000 from account number as noted, non-departmental expenditures contingency, to account number as noted, Department of Licensing, Inspection and Permits, Bureau of Buildings, PAWC Water, to provide sufficient funding for the payment of PAWC water invoices through the 2017 budget period."
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the committee on finance?
As chairperson for the committee on finance, I recommend final passage of item 7C. Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7D for consideration by the committee on rules for adoption, resolution number 208, 2017, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into an addendum to the contract between the city of Scranton and CC Cleaning Services for the janitorial services for Scranton City Hall and the Scranton Police Headquarters.
As chairperson for the committee on rules, I recommend final passage of item 17D.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question. I voted against the original contract on September 29. This is just an addendum to the contract, so to be consistent with my original vote, I'll be voting no against this as well.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
No.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7D legally and lawfully adopted. Before we adjourn, I'll just remind everyone, there's no meeting next week, so I'd like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and enjoy your families. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned.